Good morning. Welcome to the number four, 2025 agenda. Call to order, Chairman Barbara Acoff, invocation will be Bevin Foster. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Daughtry. Approval of the minutes for October 21st. Discussion Adjustment of Agenda. Do we have any adjustments?
No adjustments, Madam Chair.
All right, the Consent Agenda, Late Disabled Veterans Exception Applications, Late Early or Disabled Exception Applications, Late Present Use Value Applications. Budget Amendments, Sanji?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're going to start with Budget Amendment Number 143 from Services on Aging. This Budget Amendment is to decrease the grant award funding for HCCBG funds that were allocated in the 2526 fiscal year. Next is Number 145, this is for the Library. The purpose of this Budget Amendment is to appropriate a donation made in memory of a deceased patron and to accept an award for an exhibit at the Wayne County Fair. Number 146 is also from the Library. Purpose of this Budget Amendment is to realign the budget to pay for security officers via an external off-duty program with the goals for a police department.
Is this something new with the security?
Yes, ma'am. So, we were paying them as part-timers, but the, they were goals for police officers, but they have, the city has moved to a third-party program that gets booked through that site directly. So, we're paying that third-party directly for the services.
Is there a reason why not paying the sheriff's deputies?
That would increase your overtime.
Yep.
These are services rendered in the city of Goldsboro as well, for the library and then also, I believe, Maxwell Center.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So, we can't?
Well, I don't think the sheriff wants to at the Maxwell Center because some of those have alcohol.
Number 154 is for the Jetport. The purpose of this Budget Amendment is to approve additional funds needed for the purchase of a UTV at the Wayne Executive Jetport using 2526 fiscal year CIP funds. Number 155, this is for Facilities. The purpose of this Budget Amendment is to realign the budget to pay for new fencing around the Jeffries Building. And that is all that I have.
Any questions for Angie? Thank you. Number seven, Motion to Approve the Sale of Surplus Property Jointly Owned with the City of Goldsboro Located at 711 North Virginia Street as requested by the City of Goldsboro.
And the city emailed us about this several weeks ago. This is a property at 711 North Virginia Street. This is something, it's surplus property of previous foreclosure that they received a bid for. The bid they received was $12,670, which is half of the tax value. And they went through the upset bid process on their end with no upset bid, so they're asking for concurrence. And we would split the proceeds with the city of Goldsboro.
Is this a vacant lot or just house and lot?
There's a map. Think it's vacant if I recall. No, there is a, there is a, looks like, at least according to the tax card, at one point there was a building on it, but, yeah, that's the map right there. I think it, it may have been demolished if I recall, so there's no longer of.
Who bought it?
Who's the offer from? It is from George Hill.
And that was offered to the neighbors prior to?
It was, yes.
Like a pretty good-sized lot.
And the adjoining property letter is, is in the packet as well that the city sent.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Number eight, Motion to Approve the Final Platte for Spring Crest Section Four. Morning Barry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, this is a request for final platte for Section Four of Spring Crest. This is out on Indian Springs Road near the intersection with Arrington Bridge. This street that is part of this phase was actually installed with the previous phases, probably around 15 years ago or so, 10 or 15 years. They never developed any lots on it except for, I think, one or two, two on the side, maybe one in the back, but they never developed the rest, for whatever reason. Since then, they have gone back in, they've done some repairs to the road to bring it back up DOT standards. They do have a new build of standards letter from DOT, so now they're requesting to put nine lots on that as a final platte. So, everything's improved, everything's there in place and ready to go.
And how many lots is it?
Uh, nine.
Nine.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions, Barry, on that? All right, moving along to Number Nine, Motion to Approve the Final Platte for Tauton Estates, Section Three.
Yes, and this also is a final platte. This is located out on Fields Road. Fields Road, of course, connects in between the Hunter Road to the north and Pikeville-Priston Road to the south. Tauton Estates was put in, I mean, earlier this year, last year. But there was a section in the very back, they had a vacant tract or vacant property in the back for future development, and they left an access easement at the end of the cul-de-sac for future access. So, now they've come in for three lots on that access, which our ordinance allows up to three lots on an easement access or a private drive like that. So, that's what they're doing. It does have the 30-foot access drive to the back. So, that's what those are, three additional lots on property there in the very back.
Wow, that was really ingenious how they did that.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I thought in our ordinance that actually the approval of that, a three-lot subdivision was allowed by the planning board.
It is as a minor, but when you take the parent parcel, which was the whole tract, and you do a, you go ahead and do a major out of it, this is, in a sense, an addition to that. If they had have done this first, you know, if you had done three lots first, it might have been a little different. But because it is coming out of what was a major subdivision and an addition to that, that's why it had to come for you.
Thank you.
And this cul-de-sac is big enough to turn emergency equipment around in?
It is, it is. It does meet DOT standards, so it is a cul-de-sac for turnarounds, yes, sir.
Okay.
And how wide is that, the easement?
Uh, the easement itself is 30 feet.
30 feet? It's not going to be paved or anything, it's just going to be a?
It'll be all-weather surface, it'll be gravel, at, at the minimum anyway. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
All right, Number 10, Motion to Approve Updated Help Department Fees.
I believe it is. Help Department.
Oh, we have our director here. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. We are, um, this is Dawn Koppa. Dawn is the manager of our billing department, and the money lady is what I say that goes after our dollars. So, I brought her with me because she's truly the content expert, she has questions. But we're bringing several policies and procedures to you all today, and the reason why is we're in the process of going through over 150 policies and procedures, one by one, re, reviewing them and getting ready for a re-accreditation site visit that we will be having this year. And so, we're just dotting our i's and crossing our t's and are bringing those to you. The ones we're bringing to you today do not have any significant changes. The main change that you'll see, and one of them is our tattoo permit fees, and those are fees that you all last year chose to increase, and they were never corrected on the policy and procedure sheet. So, that we're bringing today to reflect the change that you all made. We have been collecting the fee that you voted on, we just had not updated the sheet for you. So, we're here just to bring these before you for your, for our chairwoman's signature, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Number 11, Motion to Pre-Request to Utilize Pre-Positioned State Contract for Debris Removal Monitoring Services as Presented by Emergency Management Coordinator Gary Killman.
So, th, this is our, in a natural disaster debris removal from the side of the road, we're required to have a contract in place. In the past, the county had always procured that contractor by, on its own, and that was the way it was done mostly. Now, the state is taking over that and doing a state program that you can tie on to, and it's a little bit easier administering it and bidding it out. They're doing all the footwork, so we're tying on to that state contract, that's what it is.
But are we using the same contractor at the state?
Yes, well, normally there's, I mean, I don't know how many they will select as their contractors, but usually it's the same groups.
How do we get in line? Do we, we just, whoever, whatever to get to us, or?
Yes, that'd be the way anyway. In the past, that's the way it would operate anyway, because those contractors have multiple counties. They're not coming here just for Wayne County. I mean, they'll be here for multiple counties. So, we're asking for approval to join that state.
I guess what I'm asking is, is that basically the state's going to tell us when we can get our stuff from the, the?
I don't know, I'm not going to say that, that's.
The contract is with the contractor itself, so once it's approved, we'll notice them now, so we're under contract. So, according to the contract, there's certain requirements that they have to be on-site, so that's coming by the contract.
The state is going to bidding it out and advertising in the process.
Right, so they just, basically they're providing an approved vendor list.
Several other counties have used this already, is what Gary told me, and they've been happy with them.
Oh, yes, it was, um, tied up this morning, and I told them not to come, I would, we would handle it for them.
So, really nothing changes?
No, we're required to have it.
Just have a contract.
I did it in the past, so, and we had to do it on our own, so, when I was in the planning office, I took care of it, but this is an easier process, and we're all about easier, so.
Takes two steps.
Any other questions on that?
No more questions, we move to Number 12. Motion to Adopt Resolution 2025-35, a resolution by the County of Wayne declaring surplus property and authorizing the sale by public auction.
This is just the jail?
Yeah, so, these are furniture, stainless metal items that we're declaring surplus, they can be put on public auction.
And this is with the same vendor that we previously had an auction with. It's RDD out of Mount Olive, and we sold vehicles, a lot of sheriff vehicles and some other things. And since we have, since moved out of the old detention facility, a lot of this is things from that facility, so kitchen equipment, industrial kitchen equipment, so. This is just permission to move forward with the sale, and I believe that will be December 13th at 8:30.
Did we have a, a bit of surplus from closing our county office building? The Health Department DSS?
Yeah, yes. I don't know the value of it.
Most of that stuff ain't worth, I mean, some of the, some, well, some of those, uh, some of those desks they should have used in the new building. Because some of them is, is nicer than what they got, than what the new stuff is. But some of it, you might as well throw it in the dumpster. It ain't worth the time, in my opinion, it ain't worth the time to, to move it.
What furniture that was suitably reused has been offered to other departments and has pretty much been taken and reutilized. What's left is pretty much, I don't know if it has much value, if any at all.
Most of it's particulate, but there's some solid, there's still some solid pieces in there.
Most of that was taken, but.
Oh, I mean, couldn't have walked through on Friday, it was still, unless somebody was already going to go.
I didn't see any in there that was suitable, that didn't need to be refinished.
Okay. Okay, moving along, Number 13, Motion to Approve the Final Bid for the Sale of County-owned Timber on Lots Six and Seven at Park East Industrial Park.
And this is the bid, you all approved this a couple meetings ago. It was for $2,000, and this is for mostly Lot Six. It says Lot Six and Seven, but the majority, almost all the timber is on Lot Six of Park East, and we're looking forward, we're looking to go ahead and remove all that. So, we tried to solicit bids, we didn't get a large response, but we did get one. Most of the responses that we got actually were going to require us to pay people to take the timber off. So, we did find, somebody solicited an offer for $2,000. We went through the upset bid process, and at the last meeting when you all approved it, you asked if this come back to you for final approval, just for reconsideration. So, that's what is on for, on the agenda for today.
Is the property cleared by this, like stumps and different debris?
No.
So, we have stumps?
My understanding is they would actually have to grind it up on-site due to the quality of the timber that's out there, so.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
All right, Number 14, Motion to Approve the Acceptance of a One-Half Interest in the Wayne County Public Library property located on 1,001 East Ash Street from the City of Goldsboro.
So, this is something, if you bear with me for a little bit, I, I did a memo on it, but the Wayne County Library on Ash Street is divided into two separate parcels. So, there's the main parcel where the building is located, and then in the back, if you're familiar with it, there's a garden in the back that they use for programming. The parcel where the garden is, is actually 100% county-owned, and it's been like that for a while. Since the 1970s, the main parcel, which is highlighted right there, has been jointly owned by the city and the county. When the county took over operations of the hospital, or of the hospital, of the, of the library in 2010, wow, the library in 2010, the city council agreed to convey their one-half interest to the county, and then this board or the previous county commissioner board took action to accept that. My understanding, after talking with Mr. Parker and some of the other city officials and county officials, there was a concern that the property description on the old deed did not close, so it wasn't adequate to be re-conveyed, so that was never done 15 years ago. We moved forward, Barry hired or had a surveyor take a look at it, I had mapping look at it, and it is good, so the old description can be used. I've been working with the city, and there is a copy of the city, an excerpt from the city minutes in 2010. When the city council in 2010 approved it, they put a condition that they be allowed a perpetual easement across the parking lot to access their property, the Herman Park property, which would never be an issue because we're never going to, we should never close down that, that park. So, I reached out and we worked on that wording in the final deed, and so the city was a, in agreement with that. I was told that this was going to be considered last night, I don't know if it was or not, but I would, what I would recommend, we were of the opinion that we just move forward with those approvals again, just to cover ourselves. So, what's on today is just to approve that deed contingent with those conditions. And I'll follow up with the city and see if they need anything else, but my understanding is that they're squared away and ready to move forward with this as well.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, originally, one-half interest, we already had?
That's correct.
In the property. It was the city's portion that was supposed to be transferred 15 years ago.
That, that never was.
That never was, and now we just clinging it up?
We are.
Okay.
Any more questions? All right, Number 15, Motion to Approve the Settlement Project Ordinance for the Wayne County Upper Yards Settlement Funds. Okay.
Each year, the process to select our programs, we appropriate those specific funding amounts each year. We do the budget amendments, but this is also a requirement to have a settlement project ordinance for those funding sources or for those funding programs. So, this is just a cleanup matter, it is not obligating any additional funds. This is basically a summary of all of the programs that you have approved to date. So, on the final page, you can see the total amount is $4.3 million that has been approved, and I just need your okay to move forward with adopting this ordinance.
Questions, Angie?
We've already approved all of these.
Yes, sir, this is just additional documentation that is required.
Okay.
Madam Chair? I have a question, if we could go back to Number Five on the present use and consent for the agriculture use. I looked at that online, looked at the parcel numbers, and the picture from Google looks like it's being farmed. But with the application process, are they required to submit any documentation from FSA to show that the tract has a farm number, who the tenant has been, crop reports, so that we could see that to verify that it has been in agriculture use for a year, two years, three years? Because I don't see that with this application. I just, I just see, like, what the owner filled out, but no documentation supporting that it has a farm tract number, who the tenant is, what was grown on it the last three years, stuff like that.
Yeah, the tax office does that as part of their due diligence.
So, they do that due diligence before this gets to us?
That's correct.
Okay, so they verify that it is used in that purpose before it comes?
That's correct, and the only reason why these are coming to you is because they're not timely for the year. So, the tax office would otherwise approve these themselves but for the late application.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, moving along to New Business. Number 16, Motion to Approve the Master Agreement for Regional Economic Development between Greenland North and Wayne County, the State of North Carolina, through the North Carolina Global Transpark Authority and the North Carolina Transpark Economic Development Region.
We'll go over that in the regular meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
All right. Public Comments, County Manager Report, Board of Commissioners Committee Report, closed session, do we have a closed session?
No, ma'am.
Closed session. You will adjourn?
Well, this should go really fast. Well, this should go really fast.
Called to Order, Barbara Acock, invocation by Chairman Bevan Foster.
Oh, yes. I asked Archbishop Slater of Tahaile Church from Industries to come and pray for us today.
Okay. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shall we pray?
Yes.
Our Father in our God, we thank you for this moment that we can come together with the meeting of the minds. Father, we need you even in decision-making, even in this great county, this great city. Father, we ask you, Lord, to let us see beyond what's normal. We ask you, Lord, to bless all these that we've elected to be in these positions, while that you give them clarity of thought. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Please join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please. I have a motion, do I have a motion to approve the October 21st, '25 meeting?
To move.
Have a motion on the floor, Doctor Commissioner Williams. Yes, I don't have anything up there.
Okay.
All right, motion approved November the 4th, 2025 adjusted agenda. Any adjustments?
No adjustments, Madam Chair.
All right.
I move approval.
Okay. All right, Mr. Crumpler?
We'd look for approval on our consent agenda at this time.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Harrell? You, Commissioner Harrell?
Yes, ma'am.
Record time this morning.
Well, you have a busy day.
Yep.
Okay, under new bit, we'll move on to new business, item number 16. There's a motion to approve the master agreement for regional economic development between Greene, Lenora, Wayne Counties, the state of North Carolina through the North Carolina Global Transpark Authority and the North Carolina Transpark Economic Development Region. And to give you a little background on that, Wayne County has participated for the last five years in an agreement for regional economic development with the NC DOT, Lenora and Greene Counties as partners. This regional partnership is known as the NC GTB EDR, is based out of the Global Transpark near Kinston. Its job is to be the lead point of contact and information source for outside investors. The North Carolina Department of Commerce, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, the Southeast Regional Partnership, and other state agencies, real estate brokers and real estate developers, franchise utilities, site consultants, workforce boards, educational institutions, and all other parties seeking to invest in or be involved in regional economic development activities. The partnership previously existed with an MOU between the four entities and operated under the NC DOT directly for payroll and supervision. The member entities now wish to form a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and expand their operational abilities over supervision, operations, and expansion. The formation of the nonprofit will allow the EDR to stand singularly on its own, creating more opportunities for grant applications, recruitment, and operational freedom that could not exist within the constraints of state governance. Attached is a, to your agenda is a new master agreement for how this organization will be operated between the current four members. It is important to note that all previous members under the MOU are now a member of the 501(c)(3) organization. Budget adopted for fiscal year '25-'26 will remain the same. The funding allocations for the formula to determine financial responsibility will remain the same unless membership is expanded. And I am seeking approval of this master agreement. Again, no budget amendments are needed currently as this is currently budgeted lining item for '25-'26 in Wayne County.
Have any questions? Mr. Crumpler? Entertain a motion for new business on number 16, master agreement?
I move approval of the master agreement for regional economic development between Greene, Lenora, and Wayne Counties, the state of North Carolina through the North Carolina Global Transpark Authority and the North Carolina Transpark Economic Development Region.
Doctor, made a motion? Mr. Doctor? All right, we will go, now go to public comments, which is four minutes. Do we have anyone sign up?
No, ma'am, we do not.
No signups for public comments. County Mayor?
County Mayor is reporting. Thank you, ma'am. Last Thursday on the 30th, the Wayne County Development Alliance celebrated industry in Wayne County with a banquet at Walnut Creek Country Club. I'd like to congratulate Jack Best for his receiving the Legacy Award and for Tri-County Electric for winning the Industry of the Year Award. Uh, it was a very good banquet, uh, well attended. Uh, last Monday, Wayne Community College celebrated the groundbreaking for the addition of renovations of the Pine Building on campus. It's a great milestone, uh, for expand learning opportunities in its nursing program. Of course, remember the annual opioid meetings, uh, with the municipalities takes place today at 12 o'clock at the Maxwell Center. It's also Election Day for municipal elections. Uh, of course, uh, Veterans Day will be coming up, November the 11th for observance, and that's all my comments.
All right, we'll go to the Board of Commissioners Committee reports, Commissioner Williams?
Uh, first off, it's great to be back, um, I had to travel out of town, uh, for a family emergency. Um, I was glad that the board supported the land, um, for the school in Dudley. Uh, I really appreciate the board supporting that project as we need a school out there in Dudley. Um, also, don't forget to get out and vote, um, it's very important to use your vote, thank you.
Mr. Dawkins?
I came unprepared today, I was supposed to have the, uh, the actual five-year accomplishments of the EDR. Um, that has been extremely successful for Wayne County. Uh, we moved from a position where we had our own economic developer, we paid for that entire operation out of our county dollars. Uh, we moved to a partnership with Greene and Lenore Counties and the North Carolina Transpark, uh, five years ago. And as such, and I, I don't have the numbers today, but they have been overwhelming as far as the number of jobs and the investment here in Wayne County. I believe the number total for, uh, the, uh, all of the announcements in our region was over seven hundred, uh, seven hundred million dollars. I believe the number was approximately 1,400 jobs that were created as a result of that. So it's been extremely successful by partnering with, uh, with other counties. And I can only hope that it'll, it will flourish more in the next five years. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Mr. Foster?
Um, I'd like to thank Goldsboro Housing, they, uh, did a extraordinary, um, trick-or-treat event for the kids over in, um, Lincoln Homes and Web Town part of Goldsboro, it was amazing. Uh, the kids enjoyed it and I enjoyed it, it was really, really great, so I just want to thank them for what they did in the neighborhood.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, just a couple civic things, as Commissioner, um, Williams said, remember Election Day today for those municipal elections and stuff, because your vote does, does count, it does matter, so please take the opportunity to utilize those freedoms that we have. Also, uh, November, thinking about our veterans that we have and honoring them, I had the opportunity to participate in a Veterans Day parade this past weekend, and we've got the Goldsboro Parade coming up on the 11th, so there's a lot of, uh, men and women out there that have sacrificed a lot to serve our country and allow us the freedoms that we have. So if you have an opportunity, please thank a veteran, uh, this month. Um, I had the opportunity last week to speak at the Partnership for Children for Wayne County, I really enjoyed that event, it was an eight o'clock, uh, meeting, it was an early meeting, I teased everybody that since I've retired, you know, I don't usually get up till 10:00, so they got me up really early to get there and speak, but I enjoyed the opportunity to, to speak there. If you're not familiar with the Wayne County Partnership for Children, it was established around 1993, uh, with Smart Start Funds, when that began, and Smart Start, uh, is a program that educates or helps to educate our children from birth to five years of age, as well as parenting, and they provide a lot of support, uh, to our families in Wayne County. Uh, also looking at opportunities to try to work through all the childcare issues that we have. Um, and just looking at the economic losses that we have with parents that have to stay out of the, uh, workforce because there's no, uh, uh, opportunity for childcare so they can go to work. So I enjoy that, it's a good organization, saw a lot of good people from the community supporting them, so I appreciate that opportunity to speak there. Um, and also just hoping, you know, that, um, our leaders in DC can come to some, uh, resolution on our budget, because I know there's a lot of people being impacted from that in our, our county, a lot of families that depend, uh, for better or worse, on, um, some of these things that our government provides, and a lot of children as well. So I'm hoping and praying that this month maybe our, uh, elected officials in DC can come to some resolution and get our government back up. But, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Commissioner Gurley?
Thank you ma'am, um, I'm going to try and address the, uh, oh, some of the talk going around about the signage at the, uh, Kerry Wenders Annex, uh, building. Um, I'll try to start at the beginning, uh, when we, um, uh, when we decided to, we hired the architect to, uh, to, uh, design the building, the new detention center. Um, we had the, uh, between the architect and DOT, uh, would not allow us to have a, another entrance off of William Street as the board wished, uh, uh, it was too close to the, the way that the building was designed on that piece of property. The, um, uh, the entrance would have been too close to the, uh, stoplight. Uh, so that's before we had to go to Stronach Avenue for the entrance to the new detention center. Um, we, uh, and therefore made the, uh, entrance, the old entrance, we had to widen it out to accommodate the, um, uh, tractor trailers for delivery, and that's the, it's always been employee entrance. But they, uh, suggested we make that the employee and, uh, delivery entrance. Therefore, we had to widen that out and actually widen the, uh, uh, the drive going in, take out part of the grass in front of the, uh, of the Kerry Wenders Detention Center, the, um, Annex. So that being said, we had to, we took the, the, uh, the letters, uh, come off, uh, of the sign and, uh, employee entrance and delivery, I think, or shipping deliveries, I think is what it says, not sure exactly. Uh, and that's, and probably it's going to be a year, I don't know, probably a year, 14 months, 15 months. I made a comment, uh, we need to figure out something to do, uh, so I've, I kind of took it, um, upon myself to kind of look at some different options, uh, looked at the possibility of, um, talked to Kendall and talked with Joe, Kendall Lee, our facilities director, and Joe Gilli, our personnel relations, uh, director, uh, about designing something. Uh, we were looking at, I kind of suggested we do something over top of the, uh, sign. I got looking at it and to make it, what I kind of come up with was going to be so small where you drive by, you couldn't really read it. Not to mention, we don't know what kind of, um, to make it larger, then we'd have to go through the city, uh, sign ordinance. Not to mention the, um, foundation of the sign, not knowing how, how it was, you put something taller on top of it, you know, you'd be topping it. So that being, uh, that's kind of where it come, it come to now. Um, we, uh, uh, just been discussed on several social media, uh, platforms and other media outlets about this. Um, uh, we were trying to keep it a, uh, kind of under wraps because we were going to surprise the family with some different things. But since all this has come out, uh, the sheriff, uh, has spoken with the family, um, and, and talked with them. Hasn't, they told us we were doing, doing something and we're not going to disclose what we're doing because we still want it to be a surprise for the, uh, surprise for the, uh, family. Um, just to make some other things clear, no disrespect sheriff, but our sheriff, past, present, or any future sheriff does not name buildings, the county commissioners and management names buildings. Um, the Kerry Wenders Center was actually constructed and dedicated under our current sheriff, Sheriff Larry Pierce. I mean, the sheriff and, uh, Kerry, where the sheriff Wenders were, uh, longtime friends, uh, as, uh, some of y'all may know, they run against each other, I think it was in 94 when, uh, when, when Sheriff Wenders won. Um, there was a three, three, three-way race and, uh, those sides of Sheriff Wenders, uh, Sheriff Wenders won. Uh, our sheriff, current sheriff now, worked with him from that day forward. Actually, I, he was with the sheriff's office prior to, I think, as a special, then he worked, worked with him as a reserve or special deputy, um, at that time. Uh, Sheriff Wenders, um, this little, uh, was, was, was a charismatic, uh, fun-loving guy. We, uh, we picked, he loved to pick and so did I. Um, we had a little running thing back and forth, I always tell him, I said, I'd come up to him, I said, look, you hear that? And our relationship between me and Sheriff Pierce and Sheriff Wenders, uh, was always a strong bond. I was always, uh, picking with him, I say, you know, uh, Larry's going to run for sheriff, right? I'd pick at him. Well, when I got the phone call, um, that, uh, they didn't think that Kerry was going to make it. I mean, it was a, uh, that was a tough call, and I called, actually, I'm the one that called Larry and told him. Um, and like I said, we go back, we're always kind of getting each other. So just a little, little thing between history, between me and, and Sheriff Wenders. He was always going to try to be the, he was going to be, get you the last, he was going to get the last word in, which I like to do the same. Well, he got me last because when they cleaned his suburban out, he had a, uh, he had had Jonathan Holland make a turf master sign, which is my business, and it said, "Quality work performed by turf master," it had my cell phone number in it, it had my logo. It was in his car, it was in his truck, and I was like, what, what's, they called me, said, what you want to do with this sign? I thought, I said, what kind of sign you told me, he told me, I said, I run by the Annex and get it, and I saw it, I was like, so I called Jonathan, asked him. So here's what Kerry was going to do to me, so he got the last word in. He was going to put this sign up at a yard that was grown up about six or eight foot tall, it weeds, and put my sign out in front of it. So he got the last word in. I said all that to say this right here, this is not about politics. Sheriff Pierce and Sheriff Wenders were best of friends. I and the sheriff were best of friends. Everybody up here, uh, that knew Kerry, you couldn't help but love him. Um, so let's don't make polit, just don't make this about politics, which is what it's, it's come to be. Um, we are going to do something else, uh, with some letters and some things that we're not going to disclose. We're in the process of working on it and it will happen hopefully within the next 60 days, but you know how it takes time to get things done, especially in government, so I just wanted to kind of clear those up. Uh, let me make sure I haven't missed anything. Oh, it is two separate buildings. It's just connected by, uh, by a, um, a fairly large hallway, basically for, uh, laundry and, uh, and food, uh, dispersion. And, um, the entrance to, the public entrance comes in off of Stronach Avenue. So I kind of look at it like this right here, you got the left side, it's like an extended stay hotel, and the ones on the right is kind of like a vacation weekend stay, that's how I keep the two apart. Um, I think that's it, I know I've talked a lot, but I'm going to leave it like this right here. Let's don't make, pop, just don't bring politics into a situation when you're trying to benefit, uh, someone else. I think that's what we're trying to do. Okay, thank you ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I forgot to mention, um, can we all send prayers out to, um, our Commissioner Acock? He is, uh, not doing well, so we want to make sure we send prayers out to him. And to piggyback off of, um, the situation, uh, in regard to the, the county jail. Um, I remember when we were developing the new section of the county jail and Sheriff Pierce was asked what he thought a name, would, would he like his name to be up there? And he said, no, he wouldn't want, you know, and that's, that's, that's humility to me. Um, so, you know, again, I hope they, um, you know, when you want to know something, go right to the gentleman and ask him. Don't just put something out there in the media, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gurley, for all the words about putting this out and kind of maybe removing some of the rumors that are going around. Uh, Commissioner Dawkins, that was 1,407 jobs.
1,407, not a bad memory.
Four hundred and five million, seven hundred thousand dollars.
How much?
Four hundred and five million.
Yeah, a little overestimated there then.
Yeah. Uh, new capital investments, I, I.
That was for Wayne County?
Yeah, Wayne County.
Okay, but I was talking about the whole.
Okay, well, I'm just talking about Wayne.
Okay, Wayne County.
I think it's pretty good.
You're talking about almost a half a billion dollars in investment.
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty big.
That is.
I'd call that a success.
I would too, anything for Wayne County, right? Industry of the Year Award, that was a great, great banquet, I want to extend my appreciations to WCDA for getting that done, it was a good meal. My friend, when he goes with me, that's all he's concerned about is food, I'm concerned about his women. But, uh, but I want to thank, you know, them for what they done. And, um, and thank, uh, Chip and Ginger for going as well. And that's all I have, unless anyone else has anything. Do we recess to go to the Maxwell Center? Just, just adjourned?
Just adjourned, and the 12 o'clock meeting is a separate meeting, that's what had been noted.
All right. Any more things to be brought forward? Okay, well, we adjourned, thank you.
Thank you ma'am.